All right, evening, everyone. Welcome to our workshop meeting. We have a few things on our agenda tonight, and then we're getting into our code update review again. So I'll move ahead, I'll call a meeting to order. And first thing on the agenda is approve the free parking in the municipal lot for Thanksgiving. And Fran, did you come up with a very funny little masked turkey?
I did. I had to look for a masked turkey, so I found one. So we have a masked turkey that says, please keep your distance and wear a mask. But anyway, I'd like to make-
I thought it was a duck.
Pardon me? Looks like a duck?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
It's got a pilgrim hat on. What can I tell you?
I know, but the mask looks like a duck bill.
It looks great, Fran. Nice job.
Oh, thank you. Good thing I didn't have to draw it, because then we'd all be in trouble. On that note, I'd like to make a motion to approve free parking of the municipal lot from the Wednesday before Thanksgiving at 9:00 PM. This November 25th until the Monday after Thanksgiving at 8:00 AM. That's the Monday after, so the people can come and shop over the Thanksgiving holiday. So free parking of the municipal lot. I'd like to make that an emotion.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Update, village hall access. I believe, unless Jeff is on, what we're doing is going back to, by appointment only, the door will be locked, so no one can enter without an appointment. So if you need to see Jeff or or Anne or Michelle or somebody, Kathy, you'll have to give a call and and make an appointment. And this will be our new way of life for a while, since there's a big uptick in the COVID cases. Next is the update on requests, use the bandstand by Narcon Training. Basically, they have backed off because, for various reasons, but so anyway, they withdrew their request. And next we have approval bills.
Okay, I moved to approve batch 5806 for a total amount of $176,387.82.
I will second that. It's a big number.
Yeah, big number.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So the reason for the big number is, once a year, the village deposits money in the retirement funds for the employees in the state. And if they deposit the funds by a particular date, we get a discount. So Michelle put both of those bills in this batch, and that accounts for a very large amount over, what, close to $100,000. And in addition, there's the healthcare, sorry, the health insurance, which is about $25,000. So that accounts for the majority of the amount of the bills.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We voted, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Approval of minutes, November 5th, and I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, is approval of minutes for the Board of Justices from November 10th. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any public comment? I'll just entertain anyone if someone's on and would like to say anything? Before we go into our code?
No one's on but you guys, Kathleen Foley, and she doesn't have her hand up.
Okay, so as I will say, seemingly forever, we'll go into our code update. Everyone's more than welcome to to stay tuned, and we won't be having any public comments during the period or after the period, and that will kind of wrap up our meeting for tonight. So everyone's more than welcome to stay on, and you will have ample time to, you know, to make comments during our public hearing period. That said, let's have some fun and get into this. Fran or Marie or whoever's.
Okay. I sent out an email to everyone today, because Maria and I spent quite a bit of time this morning cleaning up what needed to be cleaned up, things that we had approved and I hadn't caught. And things that we had moved around, for example, 13414 had been moved and I hadn't cleaned out where it was. So what was left was a list of things that I sent and to discuss, so I don't care what order we should take them in. I know that they're basically, one had to do with accessory apartments. One had to do with home occupation, one had to do with the size of fences, and one had to do with short-term rentals and those. From what I could see, the basic things that are left to discuss in 134.
And I'm just going to correct that a bit. It's accessory buildings, not accessory-
I'm sorry. Thank you.
And I had sent out an email on October 28th outlining what the code currently says and what the proposed changes are for accessory buildings. And here, I think the primary issue is home occupations in, for being permitted in accessory buildings. So from our discussion prior to October 28th, home occupations do not require a permit. They can be done without a permit, as long as they don't cause situations where there's excessive noise, light, smell, toxic fumes, things of that nature. Originally, home occupations were very low-impact activities, which were performed for profit by the occupant or one of the occupants of the home, such as a seamstress. A, I'm not going to say a hatmaker, because we all know that that eventually generated mad hatters. But they were considered, they were permitted in a residence as sort of a supplementary occupation by one of the residents in the village, by one of the residents in the house. So the code says that, among other things, the establishment of a home occupation or home professional office shall not change the principal character, visual appearance, or facade, or the use of the dwelling unit involved. It shall not require any internal or external alterations, or invoke construction features not customarily in a dwelling. You can see that the home occupation and the home professional use were very much targeted to that occupation or the home professional office being conducted in the primary residence. Use is clearly incidental and secondary to the principal residential use of the premises. No on-premises sales of good, no storage or display of materials, good supplies or equipment. No person other than-
On the code, where is that, where you're reading off of?
13416G4.
What page is that, you know?
It's on page one of my email.
Where is it? Where is it in the code?
Okay, hang on.
Oh.
140, what is it?
It's page 50. 3 or 54, it's in that area, page 54.
The issue here is that-
Thank you, Fran.
The issue here is the consideration of having home occupations being legally conducted in an accessory building. And from what I've just said, the code is written to have low-impact activities carried on in the residence and not in an exterior structure where adjacent property owners could potentially be bothered by whatever conditions are generated from the home occupation. And what we talked about, what many of you wanted was to permit home occupations to be conducted in accessory buildings.
At this point, it says, from what I can remember, you don't need a permit for a home occupation, but you do need a permit for a home professional office. Is that correct?
That's right.
And what also we had in this was the definition of home occupation referred to the fact, as the code stands now, that it's incidental.
It's conducted in the primary dwelling.
The residential dwelling unit. So if we decided we wanted a home occupation to be allowed in an accessory building, those are some of the things that would have to be changed. And I guess the other thing would be, if we decided a home occupation could be in an accessory building, is there a way that we can require a permit for a home occupation, such as we do for a home professional office?
So the issue really comes down to, in my mind, the issue really comes down to the fact that accessory structures, accessory buildings are typically, in today's, if we take a look at today's village, accessory buildings are typically located pretty close to the side and/or rear lot lines. So they are closer to adjacent properties than the primary residence. And I think that people who live in the primary residence would probably limit their use of the home occupation to daytime hours, so as not to inconvenience the residents of the primary dwelling. If that were, if the, if the home occupation were conducted in an accessory building, that would not necessarily be the case. I think that people would take advantage of the fact that it's not in their house and would conduct that home occupation at all times of the, I understand I'm exaggerating, at all times of the day and night. And that would cause undue hardship, in my mind, to adjacent property owners.
I think that's a bit of a stretch. I think that's a stretch, Marie.
What is a stretch? When?
I, you know, I think, I think you're, you know, you're imagining things that are just not necessarily true. I mean, okay, I'm trying to think of all the things that I know people do in their home to make a living. Seamstresses, artists, framers, editors, photographers. None of these, none of these really make any difference, much difference at all to any neighbors, whether they're done inside the house or in an accessory building, whether they're done at 10 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, or 9 o'clock at night.
I would agree with you that the professions that you just identified are very low-impact professions. But what we talked about was a cabinet maker. One of the situations that we had within the past 20 years was a bagpipe maker.
And how did he adversely affect anybody?
It's the noise. The noise of playing the bagpipe.
Would that have any difference whether he was playing the bagpipe in his house or in his accessory building?
Yes, it would be, it would be more of a distance from adjacent properties than in the accessory building.
A bagpipe will, I think, travel 10 more feet as easily as it will be right next door.
There's no way to quiet those things. They're meant to be played loudly. That's, you know.
The way I read, I mean, it looks like, well, one, I agree totally that, you know, if someone's doing something in their house, it's then not going to be that far. We don't have huge lots, so it's not going to really be that, that much of a difference in distance. Second is, if you go to the home occupation where it's allowed in your home, there's all these regulations as far as noise and odors and everything. So, you know, if those were applied to the accessory buildings, I don't, I don't see, I don't see any difference. And we have noise, you know, ordinance too.
Yeah.
So if someone-
So, so as it turns out, the home occupation is not a permitted element. That is to say, no one has to apply for permit for home occupation. So what would happen is, if the, if the home occupation generates excessive noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, et cetera, that would have to, that would have to be handled via a complaint as opposed to the type of home occupation that would, in general, generate those kinds of disturbances. Now, one of the things-
So someone complains, if someone has a cabinet, you know, using your, you know, example, if someone has a cabinet shop and they're working at 10 o'clock at night and they're cutting or sawing or whatever, can't you make a complaint and have that stopped? Isn't that how kind of it works in the village anyway, with all of our codes?
Except that there is no code that applies to the permitting of doing that outside, in the village.
But the code does apply to the noise. We have a noise ordinance.
Yes, and I would, I would suggest that we ask, when was the last time noise was brought up as a complaint in the village? I suspect the answer is never. I know that-
Dogs barking.
Dogs barking, and the only, I'm aware of one situation where a dog was barking incessantly, and it was investigated, and there was a problem. The dog sitter didn't show up the day they were supposed to, and the dog was-
So you're saying, Marie, is that everything under the permitted having a home occupation, which doesn't have a permit, and I understand, but we're allowing that, regardless of it as a permit or not, we're allowing it with all of the regulations that are shown here. And you're saying that those regulations are, what are they, like, kind of like, you can do this or not? I mean, isn't there, you can have them if you abide by these regulations, correct?
You can have a home occupation if you abide by those regulations.
Right. So what's the difference in the noise regulation in the, having it in your home, and the noise regulation if you had it in an accessory building?
Closer to your neighbors.
But that's not the argument you were just giving. You were just saying, if we applied everything, if you, if you applied everything that's in the regulations for the, having a home occupation in your main residence, and if you applied those to the accessory apartments, then there would be restrictions on the noise and on fumes and everything else. It's fairly restrictive. I don't see how people could just, they can't just go in there and just make all the noise they want and carry on all night like you're, you know, like your worst-case scenario.
So what I started, what I introduced the topic with was that, in general, accessory buildings are located closer to the lot line, both the side and rear yard line, your side and rear lot lines than are the primary dwelling unit. Therefore, adjacent neighbors would have more exposure to light and noise and odors and whatever than in, if they, if the, if the home occupation was conducted in an accessory building as opposed to it being conducted in the, in the primary residence.
And, and, I mean, you can definitely agree that it's going to be slightly more noisy, but if you want to take the bagpipe maker, who is Seth Gallagher, and he has a building that's very tight to the south, that's not right to it, that's, it's like probably 10 feet difference. That's really going to make that much of a difference? Yes, it's going to make, it's going to be, the decibels are going to be slightly louder because he's slightly closer, but-
No, he's not, it's not slightly closer. His garage, his garage is on the north lot line.
I know exactly where it is. You can see, if you look at it.
Yes, and his house is 10 feet to the south of the garage. So that's, I think it's a one-car garage. That's, that's 25 feet.
Between, I can hear, I can hear the, the, if we're talking about bagpipes, I can hear the bagpipes when they practice in a senior church, which is a long ways from where my house is. And it just is what it is.
We're not writing codes here. We don't write codes, for the exception to the, you know, the worst-case scenario. What we want to do is write code to, to give people the most kind of, to protect people as much as we can, but, but we can't just shut everything down, because people are doing these businesses anyway. You know, I mean, I just think arguing over the sound of a bagpipe for a home occupation is, is take, you know, it's just taking kind of a far-fetched view of it. I think we need to look at this as, as this is the trend of the future, and and more people are going to want to do this as time goes by, and we need to build in some sort of accommodation for it. I think, you know, I just don't think we should legislate toward the exception to the rule, instead of what generally happens.
But I also don't, don't think we should legislate to, well, people want to do this, so we should say it's okay. Although, Lynn, I do agree that home occupation is not a big deal. And I'm looking at page 56, where it's chapter 13416, home occupations, and it gives you the conditions of it. It's on page 50.
It's pretty stringent.
And I think the conditions for home occupation or home professional office, it lists a whole bunch of things. I think we're pretty much covered in there. So, you know, they have to maintain the residential character of the neighborhood, no traffic, no pets, no laboratory animals, no sales, no off-premises sales, and no storage. I think we're pretty much covered. So, you know, and I think the only thing that would involve here in, at this point, would be for us to change, maybe change or adjust the definition of home occupation so that it says not, I mean, right now, it says that it has to be in the residential, the residential dwelling unit. It's incidental and secondary use of a residential dwelling unit. If we can add, or maybe adjust that definition, and then it's up to, you know, I mean, we need to vote on it. It's up to the, to the residents to determine whether, when they look at the changes we've made, to determine whether they're for them or against them.
Sorry, here, I just thought I let the cat in.
I'm sorry, say again?
I don't know. She, Lynn took off for whatever.
Hi Lynn, hi Lynn.
I just let the cat in, otherwise she was going to be crying up. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know where you lost me or where we left.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I agree with Fran. My position is that I think we should allow home occupations in the home or in accessory building, either one.
Now, if we're going to have home occupation in an accessory building, and I don't remember the the requirements for accessory building, in order to have a home occupation there, I would assume we have to have electricity, at least as a minimal. To have some lighting in there. Is that allowed in an accessory building?
Sure. I mean, if they don't have electricity, they're not going to do whatever they're doing.
They'll install electricity. Come on.
Well, people, well, you can't do that. People are doing that now, I mean, and we don't, what are you going to do about that? People are going to-
I agree, people should be able to have electricity in their accessory building. I have electricity in my accessory building.
But-
Yeah, I was just wondering if that was, if that was allowed, and I didn't read through it. Okay, so you have a garage, you have a light in it.
And yeah, and you may have an automatic garage door opener. I mean, you, you have outlets in garages.
I remember at the time, when Seth was starting out or had been in business for a while, he got into a lot of, or a little bit of difficulty with some of the neighbors who had said at the time that you could not have a home occupation in Cold Spring. And, and it was proven then that you could, and because obviously he stayed in business, and I don't think he's making pipes anymore, but he did up until recently. So it's already-
I was on the board when that was an issue, and that was a personal issue between him and another trustee. It was only that other trustee that was making a stink about that.
Right.
But that's, that's, that's neither, that's neither-
Sentiment, you know, going around trying to whip up a bunch of sentiment about it.
But that's neither, that's neither here nor there. He, it was generating excessive noise.
And it could have been shut down with a code enforcement officer who went there, whether, first of all, it wasn't permitted, it could be, it could be shut down. But if we had it permitted and it was making excessive noise, a code enforcement officer could go there and shut it down. That's why we have the codes. That's why we have a code enforcement officer. So if people aren't going to complain, and people aren't, are just going to, you know, grumble among themselves or go on Facebook, that's their problem to me.
And I agree with that.
If somebody's like, being inconvenienced, and they're, you know, their way of life is being affected by some noise next door, and they're not saying anything, you know, what more can we do?
When the, the rules of home professional offices also apply to time, time limits and noise and everything else as well. I mean, it's the same. Aren't those interchangeable in some ways?
There are no time limits.
So you can have a, you can have a dentist's office that's open 24/7 in a home?
At that point, it would seem to me that at that point, if you have a home professional office in your primary dwelling unit, and it's open 24 hours a day, it is no longer a, the principal use of the dwelling unit is no longer a residence. It is a business.
So there's no, currently, there's no, no rules about that, for a home professional office?
That is correct. But a home professional office is not intended to be a business.
Right.
Nor is a home occupation intended to be a business. If it's a business, it has no, it has no place in a residential district.
But the definition of home occupation does say-
It's kind of contradictory, because it is a business, you know, if you're-
If it's an occupation, it's what you do for a living.
Yes, it's, it's a full-time business for the-
I'm thinking-
In your house, or to have a doctor.
And, and I started the conversation with, originally, a home occupation was intended to be a very light use of the, of the dwelling unit. It was going, it was going to be low-impact with no impact to the neighbors. If it becomes a business that is conducted out of the house, then it becomes, then it is no longer a residential structure. It is a business structure.
It happens to be in a residential building.
It happens to be-
The, the people who bought the structure that was the PCNR building originally wanted to buy a building on 9D for their business, and they were denied that ability to do that, because that was a residential district. So they wanted to make that-
Played out.
They wanted to make that a home professional office or a professional-
No, 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 no. What they wanted to do is, they wanted to convert a residential building into a business.
Okay.
Right? I sat through those hearings.
Okay.
And for it to be a B1 use, it needed significantly more setbacks from the neighbors than the current structure had. But that, that entire building, it was no longer going to be a residence. It was going to be a suite of offices with no residents living there.
So-
Bit off track. It definitely was the latter, what Murray's explaining.
Sorry, miss, I missed-
So many houses in this village that are right next to each other, that if somebody had, you know, we're talking about how closer, how closer an accessory building would be. But if the home occupation and you're doing the same thing that you're going to do in your accessory building, and many of the, probably the majority of the lots in this village, they're right next door to each other. There's no difference.
Yeah.
I just, I just really would-
If the definitions of both the home occupation and the home professional office say that these are incidental and secondary use of the residential dwelling or whatever at this point, but incidental and secondary. So if you're a doctor and want to have your doctor's office in your garage, or, you can't do that, because it's not incidental and secondary. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, I believe that that, that is correct. If you-
Your doctor's office in a house.
You can't have a doctor's office, because that means people are going in and out. That's not allowed.
But they do say the home professional office can be a physician. So how do you, how do you have a physician's professional office?
You could be a psychotherapist. You could be an acupuncturist. You could be a massage therapist.
But that, that has people going in and out.
And, and, and that, that is not the case, that is not what a home professional office is supposed to be. The home professional office, I believe that it lists a series of professions which are licensed. I can't find it right now.
Okay, I've got it. It's a lawyer, architect, engineer, physician, surgeon, dentist, chiropractor, real estate broker, accountant, tax consultant, or other practitioner of a license, recognized licensed profession.
That's, that's home, home professional office.
Home professional office.
Well, people would be going in and out for all of those things.
Typically, typically...
Than the occupation, the home office.
Right, but we're saying the same thing. There should be secondary and incidental. So basically, we're saying you can have a professional office, but you can't have clients.
You can have clients, but you can, they cannot, the number of clients that you can have cannot be excessive. So, for example, a, an architect probably deals with one or two clients at a time, maybe three. And I doubt very much that they would be going to the architect three times a day, each one of them. A home occupation, so for example, a home occupation of, in today's environment, a, a financial consultant, primarily that's done on the phone or via email. When I was doing work for Fidelity and for Morgan Stanley as a consultant, I did that from home. It was all done via emails and phone. In today's environment, many people who practice their occupation at home do so remotely.
We're, we're listing a surgeon, a physician, a dentist. Now it says traffic should be limited to no more than four vehicular trips per day. So if you're a dentist, you're gonna have more than four vehicular trips a day on the days that you're open.
So your home professional, so your professional office should not be located in your home. You should find someplace else.
Then we, then we can't list a dentist in a home professional office.
So we'll take...
Or physician or surgeon or...
No, but we're talking two different, aren't we talking two, we're talking home occupation, we're talking professional offices?
Right, but they both, both, basically both say the same thing. It's conditional and secondary or incidental and secondary to the residents. And yet, you know, I know we're talking two different things, but, but the, the, the logic of both of them doesn't make sense to me.
Right.
I mean, home occupation, I can, I can see if you're a sewer, seamstress, or carpenter, whatever. That to me is got less back and forth traffic than a doctor or a dentist does.
So we, so we remove the ability to have home professional offices?
No. That's stupid. I'm sorry, that's just dumb.
Okay, so does it make sense, does it make sense to have, Fran just pointed out, and I know I'm going off topic just a bit. Does it make sense to have a home professional office for a dentist in an R-one district?
I don't think the, I, I don't think the health department would allow it in the first place, to tell you the truth, but...
And then if they're going along with our, all the regulations on our home occupation, which I guess will professional falls under, they wouldn't be able to do it anyway, because you can't have that many people going in and out of the office.
Okay, so we've removed the ability to have a home professional office in an R-one district?
But there's other things besides home professional offices. I mean, there, aren't there?
Yes.
That...
Yeah, there's occupation.
Talking about architects, architect, and you were just making the argument that architects would only see a couple of people. That's a home profession.
Okay, I, I, I'll go with, with whatever way you want. We, we strike dentist, we strike surgeon, we strike M.D. from home professional offices.
But they've been allowed forever, and how many are there?
None.
Right, so why not just leave it?
Because then, because then we leave the door open to having them.
You leave the door open.
The door's been open for, since the sixties.
Yes, and, and in the sixties, there was a dentist that was located on Locust Ridge, right? There was a, a doctor that was located on the corner of Locust Ridge and Main Street. There was a doctor that was located on Fair Street. There was, there was a doctor...
On Haldane.
On Haldane Street.
Well, they weren't following our regulations.
We didn't have, we didn't have zoning at the time.
Exactly.
Right, and so they were granted... What?
The sixties, correct?
Sixty-seven is when zoning...
And I said sixty-eight, I was off by a year.
On Tuesday.
I didn't hear the eight.
Seventy, that's thirty, fifty years, and we don't have any, and all of a sudden the floodgates are gonna be open?
No, but if, if we don't want to have them, we need to take it out. I mean, if that was put in, in the, in the sixties or the seventies, and we don't see because we want to regulate traffic and visits and so on, parking and so on and so forth, then we need to take it out now. Not that we're gonna get a million of them, but if we leave it in, then somebody's like, it's in the code, I can have a, a doctor's office here.
But if a doctor has an office and he does all virtuals?
Well, then that's, that's fine, you can do that.
Well, that's, he's a doctor, he can do that if you take doctor. But, I, I don't know how we got into the, the doctors, whatever. I just think that's...
So, so we leave doctor in and then leave the, the traffic limitations in?
No, no, no. It seems to me that, that what you pointed out, Fran, we should delete doctor and dentist and surgeon from, from the list of home professional offices. And we leave in, we leave in architect, and I forget what the others are.
Real estate.
What's, what's a, what's a massage therapist? Is that considered a doctor? And, and what's...
No, I don't think so. I, I don't know that a massage therapist is licensed by the state.
Oh, yeah, they are.
Yeah, they are.
So we take them out.
And why can't they be, that they have a couple of people, they, they, a couple of people that come to week as an incidental...
Sorry, 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 but I could come along as a, as a massage therapist and see eight clients a day.
Yeah, but most times when people, massage therapists only have a few clients a day.
Yeah.
If, if any. You know, I go to see an acupuncturist in the village who does, and who has a room set aside in, in their house to do acupuncture, and she might get, she might get one person a day, maybe two. And it's no more than having, having a couple of friends over for tea. You know, I think we need to allow these people to make, live, make their living this way.
Okay, but I mean, there's a difference.
She can make her living as a, a massage therapist, but not in an R-one district. My niece is a massage therapist. She lives in Pennsylvania. She sees at least eight clients a day. So as long as...
The key to this is it's incidental, and you brought that up before. It's not your main business, or it's not your business. It's something that you do to kind of bring in some extra money or as a hobby, whatever you do. So you can't be a doctor running an office out of your building and not say that that isn't your business. It's not incidental then.
Right, but we were talking about home professional offices.
Right.
You just brought up was home occupations where it's incidental.
Well, the home, home professional office also says it's secondary and incidental in the definition. Other...
Then, then it seems to me that the code is, is wrong. A home professional office is probably not incidental.
It says, the, the definition in the code, the professional office of a blah, 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 or other practitioner of a licensed, recognized licensed profession, conducted as a secondary incidental use of a residential dwelling unit. So, why don't we leave it in there? And that limits the fact of somebody having their full office there.
I, I, I don't see that it, it, it does that. The argument will be made that, it seems to me, that if I am a home, if I have a home professional office, that seems to me that that is my full-time job. If I'm, if I'm an architect, if I'm a massage therapist, if I'm a dentist, and I have my...
If it says incidental, then that, it can't be your main, it can't be your business, and it'd be...
No, no, no. I think what they, what it means by incidental, it means incidental to the general use of the entire structure. Not, not whether a person is full or part-time. I'm thinking also of, of people who care for children in their home, who provide child, home childcare.
And that shouldn't, and that to me is a real problem, doing that in your home. You're running a business in your home. It's typically full-time. You have kids that come at eight o'clock in the morning, they go home at five o'clock at night. That's a business.
I think you're making generalizations with no facts base.
But I believe that that should be, that's, in most cases, childcare needs to be licensed.
Yeah, but in, in the village, it's not.
It always has to be licensed. It has to be licensed by the state.
I'm sorry, I just, there is a childcare provider on Parrot Street who has, the kids get dropped off at seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, and they don't go home until eight, until five o'clock at night.
I think, I know, I know in the city, the licensing depends on how many kids you have. So, you know, so I don't know, but I mean, it's not, it's not a village licensing. It should be a board of health licensing.
No, it's done by the state.
By the state of some sort of...
It's, it's regulated by the state. Home childcare facilities are legal in the state and essential to families raising children. Especially in Cold Spring, because there's really not a lot of option for parents with young children. So, you know, I relied on them the whole time Jack was young. And when my daughter was young too. I mean, I think, I think we have...
The ones you used, were they actually licensed? Because a lot of them are not, even though it says they are.
No, they were all licensed. They have to be licensed. And, and the house, the home and the areas where the children are, are inspected frequently, and there are really elaborate, elaborate regulations that they must comply with. I looked into it because, you know, because I was checking out the people that I was considering to put Jack with. So, you know, I, I think, I think we're, we're treading on some very dangerous ground if we're even considering prohibiting that. I think we would have a lot of problems if, if we started shutting those down or trying to.
Or let's call the state in to come in, and, sorry, I don't mean this in the code, but let's call the state in and say, my neighbor is running a home childcare facility. Is my neighbor licensed for that?
Go right ahead, Marie.
Yeah, I would. If, if one was, if one was adjacent to me or in the neighborhood, I would.
And when I was, when I was like, you know, I was very young when I had kids, and we took a few kids in. My wife got blessed, brought two kids in along with ours to make some extra money because we needed it. And I think the same thing is true now. I mean, things, this is beyond the seamstress and the hatmaker. We're now like, you know, we're where we are now, where a lot of people work at home, and, and to not adjust this code to our day and age is, is crazy to me. I mean, the restrictions down here, you would not be able to have a doctor's office running as a doctor's office like, like they usually do. First of all, I think they're the only person that can be in there, so you wouldn't have a nurse in there. So they're gonna do the whole, you can't have a receptionist. So it's just gonna be a doctor or a dentist that's gonna welcome in. He's gonna do all the paperwork, he's gonna do everything. He's gonna only have four trips a day, and, and there's all kinds of restrictions. It's like, not gonna run a doctor, so that's why nobody's doing it.
Yeah, but you...
Because you can't have a private business anymore, and then that's why everyone's attached to places like Caramount or New York Presbyterian and stuff, and they don't have little offices all over the villages. You can't, you just, it's not, it's not what's going on in this day and age.
Right, so i, i, if I, if I paraphrase what you just said, a doctor cannot, cannot, I believe that a doctor has to have a nurse with the doctor when seeing a patient.
Right.
So...
So, wouldn't be allowed. He couldn't do it in there with our regulations. There's only one person he can have in there. I read it, it's like the one person can be in there. It can't be like, you know, you can't have people working with you.
Okay, so let's come back to a different point.
Vote on this now. I, I wanna vote on this now.
No, no, no.
What are we, what are we voting on?
Well, first of all, I'm the mayor, and I'm, I'm, as a trustee, a trustee can make a, a call for a vote, and I'd like to make a call for a vote.
What, what are we voting on?
I am voting to allow home occupations in accessory buildings under the same regulations that pertain to home occupations in the, in the primary residence. Do I have a second? We have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All against?
No.
Yes. I am against that.
I'm against.
It's three to two, so incorporate that into our, into the code.
Okay, so home occupation allowed?
That will take a lot of changes, Fran. I'll take care of it.
Okay. Okay, so now, home occupation allowed in accessory buildings, same as... Yeah, and under the same conditions that we have for one thirty-four, whatever it is on page fifty-six.
Actually, there'll be a lot of changes there because it talks about the principal dwelling unit.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, folks. Could you run by what the, what Dave said?
What the vote was for?
I, I got lost as I was scribbling. It's allow home occupations in accessory buildings under...
The same regulations.
In accessory, in accessory buildings.
But then...
Under this, under the same conditions as in, um, home occupations be on page fifty-six. Is that right, Fran? Fifty-six? Although...
Wouldn't it be within accessory buildings? Not in, that's to be within.
Home occupations in accessory buildings under the same, Dave, Dave, go back and say it one more time.
Okay, but I just wrote it down. To allow home occupations in accessory buildings under the same conditions as in home occupations described in home occupations, uh, chapter, oh...
Okay, exactly, with that section one thirty-four sixteen, um, G four B.
B, right?
Please, please, please keep in mind that those conditions will have to change because they, they talk about the dwelling unit. And the dwelling, so they will have to change.
Okay. G four, G four. B. Okay, so that handles home occupations. We go back to home professional, whatever that was.
Home professional offices.
Home professional offices. Do we want to allow a doctor to have a full-time profession in an R-one district? So my neighbor has, my neighbor is a doctor, and he's gonna have his, his office in the house next to me.
Where does it say that you can be full-time? And it could be your...
Well, it says, as Lynn pointed out, the way the definition reads, it says incidental to the use of the building. It doesn't say incidental to your income. So it, it says, um, recognized licensed profession conducted as a secondary and incidental use of a residential dwelling unit. So secondary and incidental use, does that mean it's a secondary and incidental, like it's a, it's a, it's almost like it's a hobby? Do we mean it's a hobby or is it your profession?
It's not about the profession, it's about the use of the building.
Okay, so then back to the question. Do we want a full-time professional doctor to be in the house next to you?
Well, I think that, that, isn't there an... Where it's, that's, that only that person can be part of whatever this business...
Number six, no person other than a legal resident of the premises, maybe the service provider in the occupation.
The service provider, but does it mean that he can't have help?
I think we talked about, and I can't remember where it was, um, oh, that would, no, 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 that was in MU one. Forget that.
And then it says, you can't have any advertising signs.
Correct.
Visible from the exterior. The application for a home professional office permit should be made to the planning board. So it says just a resident, but it doesn't say they can't have assistance with them. I think there was something... So it says just a resident, but it doesn't say they can't have assistance with them. I think there was something.
Yeah, you can have a, um, a one hundred and forty-four square inch sign.
I just saw that.
And, and you can't have, you shall not involve viruses or the like.
Right.
So, uh, what kind of doctors are, they're not gonna be able to get flu shots? A dentist, a chiropractor?
So back to the question that we had before, do we wanna take those out of the home professional office definition?
Keep, keep in mind that, that a doctor's home professional office will probably include the storage of drugs.
Right.
I'm counting on it.
Gee, Steve. So do we wanna remove physician, surgeon, dentist from the allowable things in a home professional office?
Well, isn't it the zoning related? Are you talking residential only here or?
No, no, this applies to, um, in my email, you will see that anything that is allowed in R one is also allowed in R three, B one, B four, and B four A.
I looked through R one, Maria, I know I didn't read your email closely and I apologize, um. Okay, nevermind, I see it's right in my face.
Yeah, in R one, it says, under permitted uses customary home occupation. And if you look at the other districts, R three, B one, B four, and B four A permit the same uses as in residence districts, therefore, the changes that we're making also apply to R three, B one, B four, and B four A.
If it are one says customary home occupation, it does not say, does not, does not say home professional office.
Correct, I'm, I'm, I'm back on what we just voted on. We just voted that.
Right.
Home, um, home occupations are permitted in R three, B one, B four, and B four A.
Right.
Everybody understands that, right?
I mean, I'm looking at, yeah, I don't have a problem with any of that, really.
So people can have, um, home professional, um, it can have home occupations in um, Forge Gate, in, uh, Chestnut Ridge, and in Butterfield.
Well, that, that basically depends on their, their boards. I mean, you can't, I don't think you can have a home occupation in Forge Gate unless the board allows this.
I, I don't know.
In Chestnut Ridge, I don't believe you, you know, maybe you're a tax consultant or then. There's no accessory buildings there for us to worry about. So, what, even if we didn't change this just now, um, there's no accessory buildings in Forge Gate or Chestnut Ridge or Butterfield, so it's, it hasn't changed the definition in R three or B four or B four A. It still said that you could do it. The only thing we changed here is the fact that you could do it in an accessory building.
Um, there are accessory buildings in R three. I believe there are also. Well, for example, the, um, the, uh, the, the garbage storage sheds are considered accessory buildings. Uh, there are, there is R three in, um, on, on Rock Street. Um, there is R three, the Campbell property is R three. Um, B one, so there are accessory buildings in B one. Um, there is an accessory building in Chestnut Ridge, um.
But it's not like the residents of Chestnut Ridge have access the accessory building to put any kind of business, you know, any kind of occupation in there.
I don't know.
I mean, I, I'm not. As we voted on it, I don't think that's that much of an issue.
Okay. I don't think this is an issue at all.
I don't think it is any issue.
We, we're still back to the question.
So Fran, in number eight, it goes, traffic shall be limited to no more than four vehicular trips. And then combined drop-offs, visits, service calls, et cetera, per day. Again, if it's, if you, if a doctor is there, I, I just don't. I, I don't think a doctor's gonna have an office or a dentist, they're gonna have an office or anyone on that high end of the medical professions are gonna have.
So we should delete those professions from.
I don't, I think they can stay because I think that, as a chiropractor, are there licensed, are they, where do they fall? Where does a chiropractor fall? Where does, uh?
They're licensed as well by the state.
So basically.
Therapists and, and.
Dave, you're saying that, well, you know, if they apply for a home professional office in their home or accessory building, once they get to the section on the traffic and the parking, it's gonna nix the whole thing, so if they wanna do it as a, as a part-time thing.
Yeah, if somebody's doing a professional, a chiropractor, and they do four things times a day, which, they're not gonna make a living on that.
Right, I mean, I'm fine with leaving it. The other, the other terms.
I, I'm not, I, I, I don't think, I think you pointed out a very, a very good problem that, that those professions that were identified that are more medical should not be permitted to have ho- home professional offices in R one.
I mean, if they run into the fact that they can't only have more, and they can't have more than four visits a day and they can't have parking. Um, that will nix it anyway.
So.
Say it's a dentist, though, they have their drill going and, and they're really close now to the property line, you're freaking out with that. Sorry, I, I'd rather have a doctor next to me than a cabinet maker.
You just wanted, cause the drugs are next door. Oh, so, so in.
So I, I think we, they should be deleted from the professions that are permitted to have a home professional office. As you say, as you said, Fran, you don't wanna leave the door open.
Okay, on page nine, the definition of home professional office, we strike physician, surgeon, dentist, and chiropractor, or physician, service, and dentist. Leave chiropractor in.
Leave chiropractor in.
Yeah, well, what about, uh, what Lynn was talking about acupuncture and things like?
It says other, other practitioners of a recognized license, so that would cover whatever else.
This is page nine you said? Yeah.
Page nine, the definitions.
Right.
Home professional office. So at this point, as you can see, I.
Dentist and medical doctor, I, I think that, you know, acupuncturists, and I think, uh, massage therapists and, uh, and the like, uh, you know, I think people do that, you know, as a side gig.
Okay, so what, what the definition will read now, the professional office of a lawyer, architect, engineer, chiropractor, real estate broker, accountant, tax consultant, or other practitioner of a recognized licensed profession. So that covers all of the other people that we're, we're worried about.
But it also, unless you say specifically that medical doctors and dentists aren't allowed, then that would cover them also.
Okay, do we wanna, do we wanna put that in as, um, do I put that as, as a phrase here?
And why, why don't we, just again, why, why don't we want a doctor in a home in an accessory building or in your home, or as a incidental in your home, a primary residence?
I don't know.
What, why don't we want that versus a, a hairdresser or, uh, or cabinet maker or a potter? What's, why don't we want that?
First of all, I'm not sure that I see a physician or a dentist, um, being an incidental, anything and setting up that kind of an office. A surgeon definitely doesn't even fit there. And how can you do surgery in your home office?
Right, the limitations of what you can do are enough to keep it from happening.
I'm sorry, is, as long as it's listed there, somebody can do it.
Yeah, but they will only be able to see a person a day or, like, they, they can't have a staff. I mean, it's, it's not feasible, but if you're, you know, maybe you work in the city, but two days a week, you'll, you'll see a couple people at your house cause you wanna be local or whatever.
I know a therapist that does.
You know, that, that's, that's, a lot of people do that. They, they're not. You know, their, their regular job is, is remote, but they're still starting a, they're still seeing friends or people that they've seen for years or whatever at their house every other week or something like that. I think that that would be an exception. But other than that, no doctor's gonna wanna not be able to have a parking lot or staff, you know, and start to have a business at home.
Okay, we leave it in, we take it out.
Just leave it in. I really don't think this is a big problem. More of a problem of it.
Over fifty years.
I say, I say take it out.
Well, the thing is, if you take out physician, then you can't have a licensed psychotherapist. Because licensed psychotherapists are technically physicians.
Okay, then we can't have licensed psych.
Crazy.
Let's take a vote. Uh, it's the only way. We're gonna continue this, we've wasted, uh, you, not wasted. We, I think it's, it's a good conversation and maybe it'll come up in the public hearing, I'm sure. And maybe we'll change this back, um, and, but I, well, personally, I don't see, if nothing's happened in fifty years and there are limitations that would restrict anyone from really considering this. Um, I will make a motion to leave, uh, physicians and dentists and what else?
Surgeon.
I, I, I'll make a motion to leave it as is, the, uh, the occupations that are allowed.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I.
I. Against?
No, me.
Me.
Okay.
Okay, leave it as is. Marie, we're bad at thousand.
Yeah.
I'm just writing notes. Okay, fences, I'm sorry, Marie, go ahead.
No, a next topic, and you went on to fences.
Do we wanna do fence? That's another big tie. I know there's some other stuff that we had marked up, but I think fences was probably the next, the one that we can probably get through.
Yeah, I think the issue is four feet versus six feet.
Right, Dave, I got your email today.
What page are we on with the, sorry?
We're looking at your email.
On fences.
So the first question is four feet versus six foot.
Fran, could you tell me which page that's on?
I'm gonna get there in a second, let me just do some searching. Okay, it's on page sixty-two. It's the exceptions to yard requirements in residence districts, permitted obstructions.
Just trying to get to page sixty-two, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Scroll is slow, okay.
There was one place, and then there was, let me see where else.
Yeah, this is not the.
This is not the place.
No.
Uh, try page seventy-five on the Q.
Yes, it's Q. Seventy-five. So the basic question is four feet versus six feet. In, in R one.
Um, I responded to Dave on his suggestions that he sent around, which I thought were great. It was nice to be able to have a six-foot fence in your backyard.
Sorry, sorry, let's go back to four foot versus six foot, because Dave's things only deal with six feet. Um, I make a motion that we not change from four feet.
Let's just second that.
What is the reasoning for the four feet that you think, Marie?
The, the fourth, the, the, the whole concept of the village is that it is neighborly, it is open. Um, that you have views from your property. Six-foot fences put up by your neighbors would prevent that. Six-foot fences, uh, put up by your neighbors tend to be less neighborly. Um, they inhibit.
And was this like, where was this consensus made? That that's how the village in this day and age is, that, that makes sense?
No, I, I think, I think.
That's your opinion, and you believe that, that, but, you know, I'll counter that one saying, I love my six-foot fence. If it wasn't there, I would have no privacy whatsoever, and I'm not gonna, like I said last week, I'm not gonna go not feel com, I mean, I'll go out and sit in the yard, but not as I can right now, or, you know, I feel like I have a little space, I have a tiny yard. And if it wasn't for six-foot fences, there'd be people surrounding me, or the people next door, whatever. And I like them and I see them and I talk to them when on the street, but it doesn't make me less neighborly. And there's actually, what is it, uh, high fences make good neighbors or?
No, no, it's fences.
It says good fences.
So, we have a motion on the floor to keep it as four feet.
Usually you go from a motion to discussion.
I seconded the motion.
So, we have discussion. I think the thing is, Dave, when you talk about your property in the village, your property, property is an unusual property in terms of its size.
But you could turn, I just started interrupt, I mean, but you could put my side yard into my backyard, and that's what a lot of, a lot of properties are like in, in the village. And it's the back lot that has like, you know, a very, there's a lot of small lots that have small backyards that are but to, you know, three other adjacent properties.
Okay, so, the, the concept here is that village, a village is intended to be neighborly with as few barriers as possible.
This, who, where did this come from?
Well, that's, that's what, that's what a small village is.
It is a small village, but I, I feel it's a small village, but I don't know why, why a fence, when, when, when was the consensus that fences make, don't make good neighbors or that it makes it un, un-village-like. I mean, you can hardly, if it was in the back of most people's properties, you wouldn't even see it, as long as it's not along the front or starts from, extends from their backyard.
Right.
So, I'm sorry, so, so the, the zoning law in the village says that you can't build anything in the setbacks. There's exceptions to yard requirement says that in, if you are within the setbacks, you can have up to a four-foot high fence. If you are outside of the setbacks, you could have a twenty-foot fence. There's no limitation on the height of your fence, once you are outside of the setbacks.
Well, why should you lose, uh, distance or size of your yard because you wanna put a taller fence up? That's not good.
It's, it's your, it's your lot, you can do anything that you want.
Except have a six-foot fence on edge of it.
Except for having a six-foot, a, a, a fence.
So if you wanna lose ten feet out of your twenty feet, off each side and ten off the back, so you're losing, uh, depending on the size of your lot, hundreds of square feet off of your lot, uh, so that you can have a tall fence, that, that doesn't.
Yeah, yes, you can do whatever you want.
I get that, I never understood that one either, but.
Inside, within, if you are not in the setbacks, you can do whatever you want.
So can you say that to me again, Marie? I'm sorry. If you're not, so my setback is three feet on the side, say, or five feet on the side.
By law, it's ten feet on either side in side yards, twenty feet in the backyard and twenty-five in the front.
So if I wanna put a fence at the ten-foot mark, well, at my property line, it has to be four feet, but if I wanna put it inside the property line, it can be as high as I want, is that?
Inside the setbacks, correct, inside.
Ten feet in, you could have a twenty-foot fence if you want.
Nobody's gonna do that.
Actually, actually, people do.
Let me take my lot and make it smaller.
Well, no, listen.
If it turns out, Fran, your, your setbacks are probably less than ten feet per side because you fall under small lot provision.
There is a house on High Street who wanted to put a higher fence in the front. And they moved, so they moved it in, so it's, it's more adjacent to their house line rather than their property line.
That looks terrible, I think. I, I say, it looks worse by comparison than a.
Well, it, it, it marks off their yard. Rather than, you know, rather than their whole property line.
But it's not six-foot, it's still a four-foot fence.
It knows higher than four. I think their, their gate or their, their archway or whatever it is, sorry.
Which houses is it on High Street?
It's Catherine Fatty's old house.
Yeah, towards the back of their house, not on the front.
No, in the front.
In the front, they have an arch at the gate, correct?
In the front, on their property, on their grass line.
Yeah.
I, I, I just, I, I just, I, if you, if you take a look at our map, you know, and all the, all the lots that are small on all the streets, I mean, there's. There's a majority of the lot that, you know, with this, with our regulations, current regulations can't do anything in their backyard. Those are gonna cut it in half so that they can not put it on their property line.
If, if what you want is privacy, then yes, that's, that's your option.
Well, that's a ridiculous option.
Why should your house have to look shitty because you want privacy?
Why do you live in a village if you want privacy?
Well, that's, it's like, I don't understand that.
I live in America because I want my privacy.
So on, well, having privacy, why, well, a village means you have no privacy, put, take all your screen. I mean, take all your shades and all your curtains down because we're in a village and we're all gonna be neighborly and we're gonna walk around naked and. People are gonna like it, we're gonna have sex and people are gonna see us and it's a village. People should all be there watching us, why not? We're gonna be in our backyard having some fun, why not? It's like a village. We can go to the city and do it. It doesn't make sense.
Okay, so Dave, what you, what you're suggesting is six-foot fences from the back corner of my house around the back. To the back corner of the other side and four-foot in the front.
If you wanted to and if you feel that that's unneighborly and you wanna be neighborly, you can.
Sorry, it's the char-, it's the character of the village.
You can't even see it. What's the character of our village? I think I feel a character of our village and I don't see that as not being a char-, I mean, there's, there's several places around, right, right in my area. That I can count that have six-foot fences and it's not like, oh. It's, you know, we used to have a good character in the village, but over there on Cherry Street, uh, Paulding, oh, they went crazy. They put some six-foot fences in there. Now it looks like a city. What are these people? They don't wanna, they don't wanna be living in a village? Why don't they go back to the city?
Let me know when you're finished.
I, yeah, well, I'm not finished, I guess. I mean, I'll, I have two fences around me that are six-foot to give me privacy. The person in, um, and I guess this is character, if you have a hedge and it's grown twenty feet, so that's my neighbor. The, um, I think the Vicos has a, at least a six-foot brick wall going around their compound. You know, going around their whole property. The other house that's on the corner of, uh, Main Street and Cherry. Has a pool and they have a six-foot wooden fence going between their property line and their next-door neighbor on Cherry Street. And those are just right from my, just from my view shed.
Do, do we wanna? I mean, you, you mentioned something about, um, bushes and, and hedges and stuff like that. Do we wanna limit the height of hedges? I mean.
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that most people who got their hedges and do whatever, but some people haven't and I don't think that. Maybe it adds the eclecticness of our village.
Yeah.
Also consider the fact that a four-foot fence in a backyard, any large dog can, if they want to, will clear it.
But you, you can appeal if you have a dog to have a larger fence. You can request that.
Yeah, you can, you can ask for variance.
Haven, what's the point of having this here? I, I say have six-foot fences in the backyard if you want, keep them out of the front yard. It's the front yard and what people see from the street that, that contributes to the village character. And how the village and the streetscapes look, not what somebody's got in their backyard as a barrier between them and their neighbors. That's, that's how I feel about it. That's what I'm sticking to. Six-foot in the back, four-foot in the front.
Let me share my experience with my six-foot fence. So pleading ignorance, I went to the, uh, zoning. In front of Donald, Ronald McDonald, Donald McDonald. And, uh, I said, well, I had no idea. I already had one in the yard. He's like, oh, okay. But, so I told him I had a dog that could easily climb a fence and, you know, if there's something there for her to hop up on, can get over a six-foot fence. Cause she was just one of those kind of dogs. Great dog. Anyway, uh, and he said, well, chain your dog up. In the backyard with the fence. I said, well, that's not why I'm putting a fence up. He said, well, listen, until the village trustees decide what we're gonna do about this six-foot fence stuff within the village. Cause there's so many fences, we're not gonna make a decision on it. And he said, you can go. So I have a six-foot fence basically in zoning, just didn't wanna even handle it. He said, it's up to the, to the, uh, what word did he use? Something like elders or whatever, referring to the village trustees to decide what we're gonna do about fences because it's an issue within the village. So this is our chance to do something about it.
And I, yeah.
Because people are gonna keep putting fences in ignorantly, like I did. You know? And they, they exist everywhere. And I believe that if people wanna have a six-foot fence in their backyard. That, that, that's fine. You want your privacy back there, you know? I don't think one across the front of your house, like a stockade is particularly appealing. But, you know, backyard's your backyard. You should be able to do what you want back there.
You can do it, you can do whatever you want back there with a four-foot fence.
Well, I mean, including, including six-foot fence.
Okay, so, um, every, is that discussion over? Take a vote?
Yep.
Uh, um, I'll make a motion to allow.
Sorry, we have a motion on the table already.
Okay, but what, could you be more specific on the motion or what is the motion again? A six-foot versus four-foot with no, nothing else?
Leave the four-foot fence limit as is. That was the motion.
Why would you have to make a motion to change something? Is it to not change?
First, we gotta vote, first we gotta vote on this one.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make the next motion, so. Is to leave the four-foot as is.
Don't we have to vote on the first motion first?
That's what, that's what Marie's motion was to leave the chapter as is with.
And I seconded that.
Yeah. So all in favor?
So everyone that's, just so we're clear, everyone that is for leaving it as a four-foot fence, say aye.
Aye.
And all those against leaving it as a four-foot fence, say nay, nay. That's three to two.
Okay. Two, four and three against, okay. So, second motion.
My next.
I'm sorry, guys, before, before you move on, the motion, Marie's motion was defeated.
To lead, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Two to three.
Yep.
My next motion is, uh, to allow, allow six-foot fences. Um, as I, okay, I'm not sure how I would do this, to allow six-foot fences, uh, with, uh, regulations or restrictions. Um, I don't know how to, how to get into all of everything that I'm proposing here. So is it, where do we go from there? Do you want me to read everything here?
I, I think we should vote on each.
I think what you wrote in the first part of your email, Dave, covers.
I'm sorry, it's, I believe it's not enforceable, what Dave has written here.
Well, it's, it's.
The rear yard, full length of the property line, that is something that can be voted on. The side yards from the rear corner of the main dwelling structure to the rear property line, that can change. If I put an addition on my house. Then the rear corner of the main dwelling changes.
And you wouldn't be able to have a fence there, according to our code.
No, 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 we're, we're looking at your proposal, Dave.
I know, and you're going, you're moving toward a scenario where someone builds something, saying that, that then what would happen then? That would be their investment.
It changes the rear corner.
Yeah, but if you, if you got the permission from the rear corner as it stands today.
Right.
Then you extend your house. I think your permission stands based on what you got or what you did in the beginning.
It would be within the fence area.
It doesn't have to switch every time you, you added an extension to your house. I think that's crazy.
Okay, then I'm, I, I will leave it as, I mean, I'm fine with it if it's there and someone puts an addition on and the fence is still there.
All right, so Dave, you're, you're.
Number three, number three, I have no idea what a very limited rear yard is. And I have no idea as to how to determine whether or not the side yard is the primary area of activity.
Okay. Okay, so, see, the thing is, is whenever we come up with something and I would like to change or whatever, it's like, okay, I'll, I'll take this on. And I will, I'll try to fix it. I don't, I, I can see no one, the people that voted against it don't wanna fix it and don't wanna make it more sensible. So I'll do that. So you're right, we don't have it. And there's a lot, there are other things in the code that we should go back to that I, I feel the same way about. But, and we should probably go to some, I don't know, weird zone where any, where the, you know, anything can happen type things. So I'll work on this and we'll come back to this. And, uh, and, and I'll work on the side yards. I, I put this together this morning. So, uh, you know, and, and, and basically I knew that, that that would come up, so.
Can we vote on the first, on the first two points of your?
No, I don't see, I mean, I don't see how we, how we would go with that. I mean, I think we should, the motion be, you know, to contain, you know. With these, with the following regulations, last six-foot fences, um, with the following regulations. And I'll, and I'll fine-tune them so that they will cover, you know, anything else. Is there anything else, um, from the negative side that we can? That needs to be addressed in this so that I can address it?
Uh, yes, there are other things that need to be addressed, not necessarily that are on the negative side. The, um, fences should only be constructed of wood. The zoning, uh, rules don't dictate materials.
They don't or they can't?
Do not and should not.
Does HDRB dictate materials?
Yes.
And why can't we dictate if you want a six-foot fence, this is what we feel would be in the character of the village?
No, we don't deal with character of.
What's a four-foot fence? You're saying a four-foot fence is because of character and now it's not?
We do not deal with materials, character of materials.
So four-foot is character, wood is not?
Yes, that is correct. Height is, materials aren't.
I would think that wood totally is character. Well, is that your opinion or is that, is that, you know, hard times finding what, what is allowed and what isn't? Can, can, can the village board dictate what something is made of?
I, I believe that the village board cannot, that it is not appropriate in zoning to dictate how something is to be constructed.
But HDRB can though, right?
Yes, if you're in the.
But not everything is in the, uh, is in that district. So if not in that district. Then, and we're talking about character and character is one of the things that you're talking about that was essential about keeping small fences. Then you'll lose character by allowing an aluminum fence to go up.
And I'm, what I'm saying is that character doesn't deal with materials. In zoning, in zoning, we don't deal with materials.
I think in, in this case, that we definitely should be dealing with materials if we're talking about.
No, not at all.
Well, I will, I'll talk to John or whoever about that. I would. I, I don't see that. I mean, if we're talking about the character and what you want, what you, what, what's there and I, I just think that that's essential.
So go back to the comprehensive plan and look at how, how it deals with the.
Was that the one written by Michael Armstrong?
That was the, that was the one that was developed by about twenty different people. Mm-hmm, yes.
And mostly.
No.
How many years ago?
Ten years ago and I was on the committee too.
It was approved by the village board in two thousand twelve.
Okay, so Dave, you're gonna rewrite your proposal for the six-foot fences. I'm gonna just leave that as a note.
Uh, yeah, I will, I will have to write that. Or else I'll just write it so you can put them anywhere and then we can vote on that. And since no one's, uh, wants to assist on this. So, yeah, I'll take a look at it. And, uh, well, all incorporated into, into one type of, uh, of a motion. And, and I'll find out about the, uh, whether they can be made wood or not. And, uh, if we can't, then we'll leave that out and, uh.
And inside yard, number, uh, the second six-foot fence is not allowed, number three, full length of the side yard. On a quarter lot, on the side adjacent to the street. On a, on a corner lot, you've got two sides adjacent to a street. So you need to be a bit more precise about that.
What's a side? And a side yard, so I don't think you have two side yards on a corner lot, do you?
Actually, actually, I think, I think you have to identify which is your front yard and which is your side yard when you have a corner lot.
Really?
I think so.
Defense six-foot, six-foot fence is not allowed.
By the address? If it's on a corner lot, isn't the, the, the front of it dictated by the address that's actually listed?
I think you have to identify it.
Identify the who?
It says, it's on the house, it's in the, it's on the map of the village.
Okay, so I have a corner lot. When I bought the house, uh, my address was sixty-three Morris Avenue. It is now sixteen Grand View Terrace. I changed the address of my lot, which you can do.
Okay, so your, would be your address.
Hmm, I'm sorry?
I would think your front would be your address, which in your case is, which is very rare. If not the only one, like, because you don't really have a, a front facade, so to speak. The front facade was on Morris Avenue, now it's, there is no front facade.
No, the front facade is on sixteen, on Grand View.
Okay, well, it's an unusual front facade. If you were looking, if you were to look at the building.
I, I, I think he would say that, gee, that's the front of the house.
Okay, so then, so that would be your front yard, the address.
Yes, the address.
You could have a fence along Morris then.
Yeah.
Would be a good place for a big fence. You don't have to listen.
It would be a terrible place for a fence.
Well, you don't have to listen to trucks and stuff.
Terrible place for a fence.
Nice big aluminum one.
ABC, plastic, white, plastic, shiny.
Okay, so, um, side yards, I'll talk to John about side yards and what makes it, what makes the front. Well, this goes to the question when we're talking about height on, on the facade of a building. Because, uh, some people, I guess, would, would differ on that, so. Side yard, wood. Okay. Cut out for me?
The last, last thing that I had noted is, just points for discussion was overnight accommodation, short-term rentals.
Before we go to that, Fran, since we have my page, or I guess we have that listed on the heights, can we, can we discuss that one more time?
Okay, sorry.
No, no problem. You didn't have it on your thing, but we're, I don't know, if some, if people are looking at what I had sent, then it's right below it.
Okay.
Oh, never mind, I'll do it. It's okay. Go, go ahead. Oh, okay. Sure, okay.
Where do we wanna start, Dave? Do you wanna start? I mean, I'm seeing.
Well, the definition is what kind of sets everything. In our definition before, had the average of sides or whatever. On, on all sides. And then it went to either depending on what type, style of roof it had. And the, you know, would go to a different point on that. So my, my definition was measured taken from the height. High point of the finished grade of the side of the main facade, which now seems to be a problem. This, I don't, there must be another way to determine or to say that. Uh, I guess it's confusing to, to some, um, and of a building to the highest point of the building.
So, so a question on that, um. And, and it goes to your second point, regardless of roof construction. If the height stays at thirty-five feet, doesn't that mean for some buildings, which have pitched roofs? That they will have a shorter height?
They'll be, they could be, they could be five foot shorter, yeah, they'll be thirty-five feet going to the peak of the building. But we have a limit of two and a half floors. So as you can see, some of the thirty foot, you know, at thirty five feet, I I believe that's our 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 height, right?
Yeah, yeah, I just, when when I read it, when it said regardless of roof construction. Uh, my interpretation in projecting that, it would seem to me that some buildings which are currently at thirty five feet because of the way the third floor roof, sorry, was the way the roof is measured. They have a pitched roof would actually have a shorter height.
Uh, yeah, I think it could.
Okay.
But that's that's one reason why I gave the examples here of all the size buildings that we have and the pitched ones, you know.
Yeah, so so I'm okay with the height definition. Um, and and with the understanding that it would mean some buildings will have to be shorter. Of those with pitched roof.
So you want to change?
Do you feel that if we pass this, they'll have to take their their roof down?
No.
And you're obviously being facetious.
No, I'm not sure what that means.
No, they'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah, it's new construction. This only applies to new construction.
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna really affect many buildings at all. I mean, like I said, the one over on the that they did on sixty four Pauline, I think it comes out at thirty five feet. I I don't think it's that much higher. So it would be a little bit shorter. But from the.
I'm still not clear where we're measuring from now. We're measuring from the from the least steep side or like like.
From the highest point of the finished grade, so be the steepest point. On the highest point to the peak of the roof or to the front of the so a flat roof or slope sloped roof.
Highest grade, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the front of the house.
Yes, it does. It does.
Well, but if you have a house that the front is not on the high grade, it's in a hill or whatever, then you're gonna end up with a twenty foot house. Because so that.
No, if you're taking from the smallest your building can be, I mean, you can make the building any height size you want, but thirty five feet is is, you know, you could, anyone would be able to build a thirty five foot building.
Stephen, thinking in thinking about the majority of the streets in the village. The majority of the streets in the village slope away from the front. The majority of the streets, there there may be some that don't, but the majority of streets slope away from the front. So having the main facade, as as I interpret that, would 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 not penalize someone i- if they're on a slope.
Right.
Well, it's just the front, when you when you combine the height with it has to be the front also, that's where. You know.
Well, if you're if you're front, the only way would kind of.
So you have the front of your house, like go to Church Street where the garage is underneath the house. Like, you know, they they tore it down, but they they tore the old porch off of it or the old cement porch, but their their garage is is at street level. And if you measure there thirty five feet, it's part of the house. And then church has the big hill in the back. They walk right out the back door at the at first floor level, but in the front it's down quite a ways. So that's what I'm talking about, like.
Yes, so so use Zuvik's house as an example. Uh, um, his garage is, it's at street level. And then it goes up two full floors above the garage.
But he's not the facade of his building is on Northern Avenue.
Um, yes, you're right. You're right. You're you're right.
So you measure from.
James and, oh, what's her name?
Jeri.
No, James and anyway, it's two two houses up from Zuvik. It's a red brick house.
Yeah, my uncle, my uncle Jake's house.
Okay.
You got that still, right?
That's the front door.
Yeah. But it's it's only a one floor. It's on it only has one floor above the garage.
But if they wanted to put another story on, if you're measuring from Church Street where you go into the front door.
Yeah, maybe.
Way over thirty five feet.
So they'd be screwed. Yeah.
But there but that building doesn't, the building does not, the building doesn't start at that first floor of the building, which is their basement.
Right.
Is burned. Yeah, I mean, it's it's not at ground level.
It's their front.
So when you.
Where they go in and out of the front of their house, though. There used to be a porch there that's gone. And now they go, that's their front door now.
The front, the front door is so so Dave is right, the the front facade of that building has a a berm or it used to be a, I think there used to be a retaining wall in the front. And it's up about two or three steps from Church Street. So, right. So if they wanted to put a second, a floor above the first floor, not the basement floor, but above the first floor. They would be disadvantaged by by this.
That's what I'm talking about. But if you went in their backyard, which is not their entrance, but that's their lower side or their higher side. They walk out level back there. So if they put a second story on, they'd be under thirty five feet. And and then on the church side, they'd be at like forty five feet.
Yes.
There's such a difference. So that's what I'm talking about, that not being.
You're right.
Point of the front, though, the front of the facade, the finished grade on the facade. So what the reason why it didn't go to the back or the other sides is because exactly what you're saying, if it slopes up, then you're gonna hit the front. You could have forty foot of exposure. Maybe fifty foot, maybe. It's like, so with the of their house, and this is an unusual one too, which you can get a variance for. The take it from, I guess, if the garage is considered connected.
It is.
It would be from street level. If not, it would be from the great, the finished grade that's on the front of their house.
Yeah, the 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 garage adjacent to the garage, which is at street level. The front door is upper about two or three steps and and that used to be the the family room down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Church Street is an unusual one, Steve. You're right.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that you don't jam somebody up over that. And we'll get a variance like Dave says, you know.
I I'm sure there's gonna be one or something somewhere, but I can't see it. And on on Main Street, like say Main Street where it slopes, you know, towards the west, if you take it to high point, so the the western side will actually be high or whatever the the difference in grade is there.
Yeah.
Taking it from the high point.
In your definition, you said the finished grade of the side of the main facade, you don't mean the side of the house, you mean the front of the house?
The finished grade of the side of the main facade.
So you mean the finished grade of the.
Or is it on the side of the main?
Yeah, it it might need to do a little bit of wordsmithing there. Do you want me to try that?
Yes.
Yeah.
This would be that you want, you're talking about the front of the the where the address is, the front of the building, right? Okay.
Yeah, the the confusing thing is the side there and 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 I think I understand what you mean. It would just maybe a different way to say it.
So that needs to to go around. So any, now is that just in the definition of building height that we have to put there or is there other places within the?
I'll take a look, Fran. Uh, there may be some others.
Okay.
And this 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 applies to all districts, right, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Next.
Okay, finish my notes.
Should we take a vote on this, Steve?
Uh, we might as well. Why don't you wordsmith it and we'll.
Okay, that's fine. Right.
Okay, so those are definitions. The next thing has to do with short term rentals and it starts with the definition of. Let me get there. Overnight accommodations, which is page eleven. Um. So overnight accommodations and I added in short term rentals there, thinking that we were going to put short term rentals into this chapter. Um, there's pluses and minuses to putting it in here or having it as a separate separate chapter. And I know, Dave, you sent us a write up on short term rentals. I don't know if anyone has had time to look at it. So do we want to go on?
Yeah, I I I looked at it very briefly.
I I'm sort of familiar with it.
Partway through it.
Yeah. The the major problem that I had with short term with short term rentals was permitting them to be in accessory buildings.
And and I know, I know that um I had some issues with the number of days people are allowed to have short term rentals. And I think R one districts should be very limited, B ones can be more um, more days. So I don't, I don't have it. I apologize, David. I didn't print out what you sent today, but I know what we had discussed.
That was late in the day. I think we should just hold on it and we could, I mean, a lot of other municipalities have it as separate chapters. If there's, if that makes it easier. And then if we run out of time or don't have time to finish what we have to get done, we can deal with it later. As as a separate chapter.
The only thing with dealing with it later is I think people are itching because we've discussed this at a big meeting about a year ago and haven't presented anything, so.
I mean, why don't you, why don't we just everyone read through it and mark it up? I mean, that's what the suggestions are for. And before the meeting, we can look at it and see what we can do with it. And if we're really far apart on stuff, then then we have to make it. This is, I mean, there is a time time restrictions on us, so.
Okay. So we want to hold off.
Separate chapter?
What's that?
Doesn't it have to be a separate chapter?
No, it does not.
It could be part of zoning.
Okay, alright.
So it that depends on how much jumping around we have to do. So short term rentals will start on Thursday. I will devote Thursday to that and whatever else we have here. There's a couple of other small things that need to be looked at on this chapter.
On the, on before you move off the short term rental, Fran, the 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 days and the the number of days, I I just, that's that's pretty much what every other municipality had. That's where I, you know. That's why I came up with that. I didn't just draw these numbers out of.
No, I know that. Um. I know that listening to a couple of people who have complained about it, I think R one districts should be limited. Um, and that's just my opinion. So, you know, we we'd have to vote on that too and see how that flies.
I just wanted you to know that's what most of the other, you know, I've looked at quite a few of them and that's usually what they what they have. If you want to look at the strictest, look at Rhinebeck's. Because it kind of, it's short and sweet. They don't screw around.
That sounds like.
Pretty restricted.
Yeah. With a thousand dollar fine right off the bat.
Yeah, I I like the thousand dollar fines. I think those are good.
Yeah, so do I. Definitely gets your attention.
Yeah, no comment.
All right.
Okay, where are we going, Fran?
I'm sorry, page. Page thirteen, the definition of half story, the story comma half. Um, we had just adjusted that the definition said, and the uppermost story in which the potential net floor area with a ceiling height of no less than seven feet is no more than fifty percent of the net floor area of the story beneath it. Um. I didn't know that floor area had anything to do with ceiling height for 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 half story. That was my question on it. If if everyone's fine with the definition as it reads. It was just a comment more than anything else.
Yes, the half story um, doesn't count for those areas where the height is less, the ceiling height is less than seven foot. You can have new walls, whatever, but it doesn't count as the net, it doesn't count toward the net floor area.
Everyone okay with the definition?
Yeah, confusing as hell, but I'm okay with it.
You know, what this essentially does is it prevents three stories.
Right.
Okay, let me see. There's other comments here that don't have to do with what we have done. Let me spec up. Okay. Now, the next page nineteen is is on short term rentals also. So we'll skip on that overnight accommodations. And also on page. Page, I'm just writing pages down. Page twenty one, I had stuck some of this stuff in months ago, thinking we were going to add short term rentals here. Okay, fees for overnight accommodations, this is page twenty four. I don't think there's anything else for us to look at in here at this point. Okay, there was one on page twenty nine. The top of the page, it is section one thirty four ten. Look at my cheat sheet.
I don't know, I I don't see any markup there, Fran.
We just added at the top of page twenty nine, Marie added accessory apartments and overnight accommodations. And this was to do with they made it shopping areas.
Accessory, so in B two, which is the commercial district from um, Dunkin Donuts to through and including the drug world. And going back to include Dr. Peralia's office as well as the carriage house that Seth owned at one point, which is fronted on Marion Avenue, that whole district. We we are prohibiting accessory apartments and overnight accommodations.
Okay, in addition to those other things, following uses are expressly prohibited. And we just added those to. Yes, no, maybe, we're okay.
For that, just that particular zone, okay.
I'm okay. Just that particular zone, B B. It was B two.
Do we need in accessory apartments? Do you mean accessory buildings?
Nope, I mean accessory apartments.
So no apartments like above a business?
It it means that if you have a structure and and you want to reconfigure this, the interior of the construct structure to have two residences in it, that is not permitted.
Okay.
Keeping in mind that this is B two.
Yeah, this is, this starts at the Dunkin Donuts though, right? Not that, does it include the house next to it?
The house next to it and the house behind the house next to it.
Yeah.
They are currently in.
I'm always fuzzy about where that where that line goes.
And then they are. The 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 house in the corner of Wall Street and Chestnut Ridge is B one. And the house behind it is B two.
And those those you wanted to rezone anyway, right, Marie?
I I'd like to consider for for your consideration, making those two parcels are one.
Well, I started going through the the zoning on appendix D. I got partway through it. And then got ran out of time, but I will continue.
Um, there's another consideration. Um. Prior to two thousand five. The entire area below the railroad tracks was I one. And there were, the proposal from the village board was to rezone that entire area to to be one. Uh, the reason it was zoned I one, many of you will not remember this, but the old lumberyard was there. Uh, that's where the condominiums are now. And where the boat club is now. Um, there was the Smith Oil Dock, which is there. I can't remember his name. Uh, what's his name? Uh, the Downey property. That that was I one. And the area adjacent to Metro North was what was called the freight yard. There was a freight siding there, et cetera. So it was properly an I one. At the time, it there was consideration to build the condominiums. And the village board held a number of public hearings on rezoning that those areas to be B one. And that's what in fact happened. So all of the areas to the west of the tracks are. And that's what in fact happened, so all of the areas, um, to the west of the tracks are B-one. With the exception of dockside, which is R-one, and Laura Bergman's, which is R-one. And then Tom Impel's property, which is, not sure what that is, but what is probably correctly identified as R-one. A question for you, should that, that, that area be re- rezoned to be R-one where appropriate? The Main Street properties, I would recommend that they remain R-one. Sorry, B-one, but the properties outside of, um, um, Main Street. Should probably be rezoned as R-one.
So we mean New Street and, and?
Yes.
Those areas?
New Street, yeah, New Street, uh, actually, all of the properties along Market Street.
With the, the, what about where the, um, the old, um, Pedala compound there?
With, with the exception of that one property.
You mean the Hudson River Expeditions?
Yeah.
Where they are?
Yeah.
But that, that property goes from the corner.
No, there's actually two lots there.
Okay.
Okay, there's the house on the corner, which is one lot, and then there's, um, the Hudson River Expeditions. Which is a second, separate lot. Is that some, is that something that?
What about the, uh, dance studio and doesn't, uh?
The dance stu-, dance studios on Main Street?
Okay.
That's all considered B-one, Main Street?
Would be, Main Street would be considered B-one, and, um.
Why would Main Street be MU?
Because it's business.
But it isn't all. Does the apartment buildings next to, uh, east of, um, the Hudson House?
That's not Main Street.
That's on Main Street?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, um, it's currently zoned B-one.
So what?
It would stay B-one, we wouldn't change that.
Not, uh, R-three or MU?
That, that R-three would be spot zoning.
Right.
Right, if we made that R-three, it's just like Jim Smith's building, uh, adjacent to, um, the paint store. That's a multifamily structure. It's R-one, that, there are a number of structures in the village, which are currently zoned as R-one. Which are essentially multifamily. So, for example, on Church Street, there are at least two buildings that, oh, three buildings. Um, Phil Heffernan's building, Budney's old building, and who's the other building? Uh, there's another building on Church Street, which are, um, apartment buildings. But they, they remain as R-one. Is that something that the, that the board wants to take on, or just, that's more than you wanna handle?
Um, I think we should take it on, since we're doing the zoning, and we're gonna create a new zoning map, right?
Yes.
Would be, I'm, I'm in favor of taking it on.
Not mixed use, MU?
No.
I'm in favor of taking it on and figuring it out, but.
Yeah. Okay, I'll put together a proposal.
Okay, meanwhile, I'll continue on the, uh, appendix D and see if I can clear through that, Marie.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, next, on page forty-nine, uh, we are at the section called, let me see. This is regulations of B-four A district, uh, and we're on page forty-nine, which is. Oh, supplementary regulations, it says parking number six, and underneath number six. Uh, per, uh, two, where it says where parking is sufficient for existing uses as the date of, as of the date of this amendment. No additional parking shall be required for said use, however, such parking shall not be decreased. And Matt, uh, Matt, 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 I'm sorry, Matt.
Matt, you had asked, Dave, you had asked that I have Matt review, um, uh, one thirty-four fifteen A. Which is B-four A, and he recommended that this be removed.
So we okay with removing this?
I'm, I'm kinda lost, where are we, Fran?
I'm sorry, we're on page forty-nine.
Right, and what's the, uh, my page is.
This, uh, section is.
Secondary regulations.
B-four A, medical and health, this is, Marie, is this? Butterfield or is this Chestnut Ridge?
This is Butterfield.
This is Butterfield.
Okay.
Why didn't he re- recommend taking it out? What, what was his reasoning for that?
So, if you look at the one above it. Uh, the planning board may reduce the required parking spaces up to twenty percent when shared parking amongst uses can be demonstrated. That was used to decrease the parking spaces required, when in fact, shared parking. Does not exist at Butterfield. Shared parking exists when you have, um, an area where one, uh, business. Operates from nine to five, and another business operates from five to ten PM, eleven PM, whatever. So, s- but, but the parking spaces were decreased due to number one. Number two could be interpreted to mean that when building one comes online. No additional parking shall be required. So Matt is recommending that it be taken out.
Um, I, I will go by Matt's recommendation.
Uh, I would do the same, he's the one that dealt with them and knew the ups and downs with it, so. I'm good with it.
Me too.
Okay, that's, uh, Marie, I think that, I'll just renumber.
Yeah, 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 landscaping, right, so we're at eight oh one?
We're gonna go to eight or eight thirty. I don't think there's much more in this for us to discuss.
I, I, I begin to fade after two hours.
Okay.
I'm hungry.
Okay, I'm good, so we're good?
Okay, we're good.
Okay, so we got the short-term rentals to kinda look at and see if we wanna take that on, or think of that, and then the height I gotta work on. And.
No, I, I'm gonna work, I'm gonna work on the height, Dave, you don't worry about that, you, you work on fences.
Offenses, okay.
Okay.
Are we six, six o'clock on Thursday? I apologize, I totally spaced on last Thursday, I was.
We missed you.
I'm sorry.
You didn't miss one.
Yeah.
Alright, so Thursday, we are at six, six to eight are we going?
Yes, Fran, I think landscaping should be number six, or numbers, I don't think it's under, I, this is, the topic here is parking. Um.
Okay.
So, yeah, so landscaping is. It doesn't come out, it becomes a different number.
Okay.
Good, okay, great.
That works, thank you, okay, and, um, I, if there's anything else on this, we will, uh, move from there. I will, and I'm, I have to turn on on Thursday, so if somebody doesn't see, the meeting's turned off, because I forgot I was supposed to turn her on, so yell at me.
Great.
Okay, good night all.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
What was that, Lynn, did you have something?
I just said goodnight, everybody.
Oh, goodnight.
Goodnight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great. Night, goodnight, Michael.